I call this the November 19th, 2019, meeting of the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners to Order. Our invocation tonight will be given by Brother Don Hackney. Don is the Minister of the Harmony Hill Church of God. And our pledge tonight will be given by Lucas Durham. Luke is a seventh grader at Ralph Askins. He recently received the Principals Award and the Most Respectful Award. He loves being outdoors, and he's the son of Stephen and Danielle Durham. If y'all would please stand at this time for invocation and pledge.
Shall we pray? Heavenly Father, we thank you for a time such as this when we can come together as a community. And Father, that we can join together in your presence to conduct the business of our county. Father, these have been beautiful days that you have made for us to enjoy, and we so appreciate the joy and the beauty of this, of this part of the country. All made by your hands. Lord, as we come together this evening, we pray that you would bless every commissioner and every person who is here to, to do business this evening. May it be conducted, Father, in a manner that would bring honor and glory to you. May we remember in this time of year, time when we give thanks to you, that we need to be compassionate, we need to be kind, and, Father, to really to realize that when we do it unto the least of these our brethren, we are doing it as it were unto you. So be with this body this evening as they do their deliberation, and may all be done in a manner that brings you honor. We pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Brother Don, and thank you, Lucas. At this time, if you would, answer the roll call electronic. Madam Clark?
Have 22 commissioners present, two absent.
Alrighty. At this time, I do not have any announcements. I would entertain a motion for approval of the October 15th, 2019 minutes of that meeting. Commissioner Douglas makes that motion. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Commissioner Dangerfield seconds it. Any questions, comments, or changes from the minutes of last month's meeting? All who are in favor of approval, as they were printed, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. You should have received 14 monthly committee minutes and seven quarterly, monthly or quarterly minutes in your packet. Anybody didn't receive those, please let us know, and we'll get them to you. The next item on our, Robin Roberts, the Executive Director of our County Technical Assistance Service, is with us tonight. At the request of Ms. Sheila Allen, Robin is here to address some of the concerns and the things we will need to do after the 2020 census. Robin, thank you for being with us tonight.
Thank you for allowing me to come and talk to you. Thank you all of you for serving as county commissioners. I know it's somewhat of a thankless job sometimes, but you have a tremendous amount of responsibility, and as we move forward in the future, you will make some decisions in the next couple of years that will carry them for 10 more years. So, as most of you know, the census is going to be taken in 2020. We should have the final numbers near the end of 2020 and, or early in 2021. At that point in time, the county legislative body will be charged with redistricting the entire county. The Tennessee Constitution provides for an election of a county legislative body in each county that should equally represent all areas of the county. The constitutional provision is that the legislative body shall be composed of representatives from districts in the county as drawn by the county legislative body pursuant to statutes enacted by the General Assembly. Districts shall be reapportioned at least every 10 years, based upon the most recent federal census. The legislative body shall not exceed 25 members, and no more than three representatives shall be elected from each district. So 25 is the maximum number you can have. In the statutes that are, have been written since, those statutes require a minimum of nine, so you can't go below nine or above 25 in this process. These statutes are found in TCA 51-110 through 112. And they basically require you to meet every 10 years and adopt this. One of the first steps that you will have in the actual work process, it's recommended that the county legislative body should appoint a redistricting, a reapportionment committee. And in developing that redistricting plan, is something that you really kind of need to do in advance to give the reapportionment committee a guidelines for where you want them to go. And when I'm saying that, there's nothing to restrict you to the district numbers you have now. You can go, you have 24 current commissioners, you can go to 24 districts. We've had a county in the past that have gone from having, say, nine districts with 18 commissioners, to go to 18 districts. That makes your district a little more compact, and it makes it a little bit easier for the compaction and, and the contiguous nature that you have to do. Your reapportionment committee does not have to be made up totally of the county legislative body. Whatever committee that you put in place, whether it's all county legislative body members or not, if you have private citizens on there, or if you elected to put your election administrator on that, that body, you can do that. When you do create that reapportionment committee, strongly encourage the reapportionment committee to work with the Administrator of Elections. There are a lot of impacts that can be had on voting precincts and things like that, based on where you draw the lines, that, that they are aware of, of issues that have occurred in the past. So, you know, once you're giving that reapportionment committee the guidelines you want to do, then it'll be the, the job of the reapportionment committee to contact the organization that's assigned to your county. I'm suspecting that'll be CTAAS. We've done it for the last three times that I'm aware of, but the Comptroller's Office does some of those counties. In the last reapportionment, we did 67, I think it was 67 of the 95 counties. We did Lincoln County 10 years ago, and 20 years ago, or thereabouts. I, I was the field consultant for CTAAS in this area, and I drew the maps back then for the reapportionment committee. So, it's not a, a really difficult process, but the laws that comply with it, those districts, there are several things that you have to be real cognizant of. The districts have to be equal in, relatively equal in numbers, and that means that the allowance is no greater than 5% variance from district to district, or no greater than 10% from the highest to the lowest. So those are the ranges that you have to go into. There are also some things that you need to be aware of in drawing your district. It is critical that you not split a community that would give a district a minority, a majority. If you have a minority population in an area, you're prevented from drawing that district line through that minority population and splitting them. That has been done historically in a lot of places. 10 years ago, we had one county that ended up in a federal lawsuit over that. So one thing you do not want to do is get into this process and wind up in a federal court case. It takes one citizen to file that complaint, and the cost of that is rather expensive. So it's strongly encouraged not to do that. 18 years ago, when we were working on the maps, we had a situation here in this county where we had to move some district lines to accommodate that very issue. And I got a real dressing down outside of the courthouse after that was passed and presented, quite frankly, and, and the gentleman that did it was very concerned about his community, didn't like having the district line changed where it had been, and, but it was to help maintain that minority interest in that particular district to have representation. So those are just a few of the things that make this a little bit of a trick and, and all, but we'll get those, you'll get your census data in what we call block boundaries. Those are really small geographic areas within your district. And when we go into moving the maps, we have to move those maps by the blocks. We can't split a block, you can't split a precinct, you have to keep precinct intact. With the approval of the Administrator of Elections, and in a few places that where you have dense populations, this has happened, where you've had a split precinct, where a, a, one precinct may serve two districts, is what I'm trying to say. And so it, it's real critical that you work with Administrator of Elections to make sure as you go through this process that your technicalities are, are dealt with in an appropriate manner. So once the reapportionment committee comes up with their plan, it comes back before the legislative body for approval. And at that change, at that time, the legislative body can make recommendations if they don't like, and they can change it. It's been a real, excuse me, a real smooth process here in Lincoln County for the last two times. It's not been real problematic for that to get passed, but we have had situations across the state where, you know, it'd get all the way to the county legislative body, and somebody would be in opposition to it, and then we'd have to start back. So it's very critical to make sure that as this process goes along, and I know 18 years ago, we had the reapportionment committee, but we had other members of the county legislative body that would attend certain meetings and express some of their concerns. It was not uncommon to have more people there. So it is a public meeting like anything else, and it has to be properly advertised and, and worked on. Districts cannot overlap one another, and no voting precinct can be split into two different districts. Now, you can have two districts voting in the same precinct, but you can't have a precinct split with two different voting districts. I know that's kind of confusing, but it, it, it works in the, in the process, and we will help you walk, walk through that process. CTAAS will, or, or someone from the Comptroller's Office, like I say, we've done it for a number of years, and I suspect we will be back, but those assignments have not been made at this time. You do not have to create new voting districts to conform to the boundaries, you just have to keep those voting districts that you have and change the lines, or you can change the number of districts. That's a question that you, you have to address in your, in your process. Before the new reapportionment plan takes effect, it must be put into writing and adopted by the majority of the county's legislative body. Now, legal laws have been changed, now the statutes have been changed, that writing can be the drawn map that's provided to you by your service provider, and I'm again saying that's probably going to be CTAAS. We used to, until the 2010 census came out in 2011, we used to provide a map and then have to do a legal description of the entire boundary, which took a lot of paper and a lot of time and a lot of effort to draw every line, and it came to situations where you would, a line may intersect a road, and it may be a creek that would intersect a road and then split off to the road and go up and hit another creek. Well, that's somewhat hard to describe, because you would have to say how many thousand feet that it may have run up the road and go off to a creek again. So those things were very complicated and very difficult to get right. In fact, I think our first draft on that, we had a, a boundary that didn't, the description when you followed it on the map didn't, didn't quite fit that, that map, and we had to come back later and re, redo that, that one change. So those things have been removed now because of the technology that allows the map itself to be printed in such a way that people can see what their boundaries are. You can, we can expand the map area to make the detail very clear to everyone, and we did that in 2010, and we did that back in 2000, in 2000. But that will be done. I want to encourage you, as this census starts off next year, the Census Bureau is now recruiting people. They're already recruiting, they're, they've upped their compensation level. I think that compensation level's now $15 an hour. They need a lot of people to work for a short period of time. It is something that they reimburse for mileage and things of that nature. It's very important for you as citizens and commissioners to get as many citizens to report their census accurately, because a lot of the distribution of revenue that you receive as a county government, through the federal government, down through the state, from the federal through the state, and also from state revenues that get redistributed among the counties, there's one of the factors that's used a lot is the population count. So one person can, can cost you thousands of dollars in revenue loss if you don't get those people counted. So it's very important to encourage everyone in the county to comply with a census request and, and fill out the information. And so once you get that census and they finish that, you will receive the, the census report, and it'll be provided in a block boundary format. So every block will have the amount of population in that block, and it'll break that block down by other factors, ethnicity and things of that nature, that allow you to properly reapportion your districts. School board districts will also be drawn at that time. I think, if I'm not mistaken, your school board districts mirror your commission districts.
Yes.
So we have some counties that have two commission districts make up a school board, and we have some counties that have different combinations of that. So that's a relatively easy thing to do. Your reapportionment work can, this is an ideal time for you to decide how you want to move forward into the future. And I will say this, the number of commissioners you have is, is on the large side. In fact, there are only 13 counties in the state of Tennessee that have as many commissioners as you do. Some of the larger counties have much smaller commissions. For instance, Shelby County has 13 commissioners with over 900,000 people. So each commissioner in Shelby County represents 71,000 people. Each commissioner in Lincoln County represents 1,390 people, based on the 2010 census. So there is a disparity. Knox County has 11 commissioners, representing, each commissioner representing about 39,000 people. Hamilton County has nine commissioners, each commissioner represents about 37,000 people. Davidson County has, they have 39 district commissioners and five at-large council members that are elected at-large, so they have a total of 44. Each one of those represent about 15,000 people. So that's kind of an idea of what some of the other counties are doing. McMinn County is an unusual county. They were the first county in the state to be debt-free, and they are still pretty much debt-free. We have two other counties now that have acquired that, but McMinn County has 10 commissioners. So it is something for you to consider, is the commission body size necessary for it to be the size that it is? Would it be more effective and more efficient? And I'm not encouraging you to do one thing or another, I'm just saying this is the time, the best time to do it, because you're about to redraw districts, you're going to do this one year before the election, it doesn't change anybody's existing term, you will go through the, the August of 2022 and your existing term regardless of what you do with your district. So this is an opportune time for you to make those kind of long-range determinations and decisions, and being here at this point in time, before you get your census and, and you start doing this, is a really good time for y'all to put a plan together to determine, do you want to continue like you are, or do you want to make changes? One of the problems that, that I visualize in your districts, you've got some pretty compact districts as you get in close to Fayetteville, but when you get further away, especially in the southeast and southwest, you get some pretty big geographic districts, and that's a, that, that gets you kind of away from a, a really close relationship with those commissioners in a lot of cases, because they're just, there's an inconvenience to it. The other thing that, you know, when I look at what we see across the United States, we're an anomaly with about five or six other states that have anywhere near the county commissioners we do. When I go to meetings in, on, in other states and we're discussing these kinds of things, and when we tell them from Tennessee that we have to have a minimum of nine commissioners, most of the time they look at us like we're really peculiar, because most states don't have nine commissioners in their counties. It's much smaller district boundaries, and they just ask us, how do y'all manage with that? A nearby state, Mississippi, all their states have five commissioners, county commissioners. In Georgia, they have a unique thing. They have a, a structure down there, and there's about 10 of them, and they're called a sole commissioner. I don't know if any of you have ever heard of that, but he's the only elected official in the county government. He is a sole commissioner. He hires, everybody else that works in the county government is hired by that sole commissioner. And it's kind of an interesting concept. We can't do that in Tennessee, and I certainly wouldn't recommend it, but one of the commissioners that I know, he's a sole commissioner, has, he said it's, it's got its upsides and its downsides. He said, "I answer to everyone, but no one." That's been his comment to me. He said, "The buck stops with me on everything. I can't blame anybody." So it's, it's a unique concept, but it's just to show you the kind of differences that are across the nation and the differences within our own state. The median number for commissioners in this state is 17. There's less than half of the, half of the counties have more than 17 commissioners. The majority of the counties have 17 or less. And there's, to give you an idea, there are only four counties with 17 commissioners. So the vast majority of those are much less than 17. So that's something for you to consider. I wanted to give you that information to let you see how your county compares to other counties in the state. Commission size doesn't make you good or bad. I'm not saying that. What I will say is, some of those counties that are, and I will use Hamilton County as an example. Hamilton County is a triple A rated bond, they're very sound financially, and they operate with only nine commissioners. And that's, that says a lot for that county to be able to do that. And again, McMinn County was the first county, and they've been debt-free for probably close, almost 20 years now, I'd say. And they, it's not to say they don't have other challenges, but, but that is one of the processes. But as you go through that process, and if you have any questions before you get to that point, feel free to call your, call us at CTAAS. We will be glad to come and work with you and help you. I suspect we will be helping you in the 2021 year to do those maps. How many people have served in the past on the, I know some of you are in here that served on the past reapportionment committee? Yeah, and most of you would, can recall, we were drawing the maps on the big wall, and you were able to see as we moved and as the population changes. So it, it is not a, a simple process, but it is one that, that can move pretty fluidly. But I will encourage you to keep the Administrator of Elections informed as you go through the process. There are unique challenges for certain voters and precincts that she's aware of that will not be in the information from the Census Bureau. So those things, I always liked to tease Bill about it. When I did it in 2001, without knowing it, we drew Bill out of his district that he, he was a commissioner of, and it was because he lived on the wrong side of the creek. His, the boundary was a creek, and we didn't know his house was on the opposite side of the creek from the road, and so it, we drew him out of his district without even knowing it. Didn't know that was the situation until it came out, and Bill, Bill wasn't very happy about being drawn out of his commission district, and him as a sitting commissioner, but I still tease Bill about it 20 years later. Do y'all have any questions for me?
Any questions, Mr. Roberts?
I got, I got a question. He mentioned, I believe you mentioned Hamilton County had nine commissioners?
Mm-hmm.
What's the tax rate in Hamilton County? You know?
Not off the top of my head, I don't. It is not one of the highest in the state, though, but they do have a, they, they have maintained one of the highest bond ratings, and they're financially very well managed and have been for years. And it's not, it's not been detrimental to them, based on the commission numbers. You know, it, it has, I'm not going to say they don't have challenges, but every, every county has challenges. We have big counties with challenges, and we have small counties with those challenges, but they have, they've operated that way for a number of years. Knox County's reduced theirs, I can't remember if it was 20 or 30 years ago, they reduced theirs to 11 districts. Shelby's been that way for quite a long time, as I recall, but as I said, we have, you know, we have quite a few counties with, well, a third of the counties in the state have 14 or less commissioners, a third of the counties. So you have a, you know, about another 25% that have from 12 to 17. So commission size doesn't make you effective or ineffective. Davidson County is going through some extremely difficult financial challenges right now, and they're, they're the highest number, but that number's not the reason they've got their problems. But it is- But it is a time for you to look and consider, how do you want to go forward? What is the best way for you to move forward in the future? Redistricting is a very busy time for us. As I said, we're, we spend days with each county that we work with. And we're, we're a relatively small agency. We're about thirty-six people total. And we're not all devoted to doing reapportionment. We just have about eight to nine consultants that do this. And so it's a, it's a very, very busy time. The more of these kinds of decisions that can be made up front before you get into the process makes it run a lot smoother. I'm not here advocating that you do that for our benefit. I'm advocating for you to do that as a decision-maker body for your county and how you think this is the best way to go. I have heard in a lot of situations where we've had county officials that have come to us, and they've stressed out where they've had multiple member districts where they couldn't get people to run. And, you know, it's a difficult thing when you have multiple member districts. You know, sometimes you have, we've had elections in the past where they didn't have somebody and had to appoint somebody after the election because there was nobody that ran. And to me and my, my opinion, if you've got someone on your committee, commission, that didn't even want to be a commissioner, didn't want to even put forth the effort to get his qualifying, his or hers qualifying papers filled out, they're probably not going to be a very committed commissioner to doing the work and, and take on the commitment that this requires. These challenges are getting bigger and bigger. The complexity of county government's growing, the demand's putting on, county government's growing, and it takes more and more time that needs to be devoted to make sure these counties are, all counties are being addressed in the ways that they should be. And we have, I can recall about six or seven counties right now that have been sent letters by the Comptroller's Office for being financially distressed, that they are being charged with getting their financial picture in order, and the Comptroller's having to address that on a regular basis. We see those things on a, on a ongoing basis. Lincoln County's not there and hasn't been there. You are a very well-managed county. Y'all have had good mayors. You've got, had a good county commission, and you've got, I was telling Phyllis earlier today, Lincoln County's been very blessed. Y'all have had a great group of county officials in this county, and they have done a great job. So y'all are, are very blessed with the people that you have engaged in your county. So, any other questions?
Anything else for Mr. Roberts? Thank you, Robin.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. And thank you, Sheila, too, for getting this on our agenda. The next five items. Nancy Harris, Director of Planning and Zoning.
Good evening, everybody. First up on the agenda is the consideration for approval of rezoning for the William Boyett, file number two thousand and nineteen R seven. We had a public hearing earlier this evening, just one inquisition, but other than that, no comments. This is to rezone from A one to C one. And y'all should have my staff report. It's on Old Huntsville Road.
Okay. Okay. Commissioner Taylor makes a motion for approval on change of that zoning. Do I have a second? Commissioner Ewing seconds that. Any questions or comments on this first item? If not, all those in favor of the change in that rezoning, please say aye. Any opposed? No. Unanimously approved. Ms. Nancy?
Second on the agenda is also a rezoning, case number two thousand and nineteen R six, Ava Malone. This is also to rezone from A one to C one. This is on the southwest corner of Huntsville Highway and West Lincoln Road.
Was there the public hearing for it?
I'm sorry, yes. Public hearing with no comments whatsoever.
Comments? Okay, what's the will of the commission? Commissioner Jeans makes a motion, seconded by Commissioner Taylor. Any questions or comments on this item? Not all those in favor of changing that zoning, please say aye. Any opposed? No. Unanimously approved. Ms. Nancy?
This is also a rezoning request, file number two thousand and nineteen dash seven. This is for Johnny and Bonnie Cowan, located at thirty-eighty Huntsville Highway. This is to rezone from A one to C one. We had a public hearing earlier tonight with no comments.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Sprague makes a motion. Commissioner Mitchell seconds. Any questions, comments on this item? Not all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? No. Unanimously approved. Next item.
This is a consideration to call for a public hearing. This is case two thousand and nineteen R eight. This is for Clayton and Gaila Wilson. Request is to rezone from A one Agriculture, Forestry, Rural Residential to C one, General Commercial. This is located on Pulaski Highway. Y'all should have that staff report along with a map in your packet. This is a seven-point four-eight acre tract that has been used as a commercial business for quite some time. So they are requesting to zone it appropriately to C one.
Is there a motion to call for a public hearing prior to next month's commission meeting on this item? Commissioner Thorpe makes a motion. Commissioner Bryan seconds. Any questions or comments on this item? Not all those in favor of calling for a public hearing, please say aye. Any opposed? No. Unanimously approved. Next item.
This is also a rezoning request, case number two thousand and nineteen R nine, for Harold and Jeff Tunstall. I believe Mike Gooding, the representative, is here in the audience if anyone has questions. This is to rezone from A one Agriculture, Forestry, Rural Residential to C one. This is for their property located Borderline Road and South Van Town School Road. Most of y'all know it is, it used to be the Tunstall cable or satellite place. They're expanding the trailer business that's there and want to rezone it to C one.
Move approved.
Okay. Commissioner Ogilvy makes a motion that would call for a public hearing for this property. Sir, a second. Commissioner Young seconds it. Any questions or comments on this item? All those in favor of calling for a public hearing, please say aye. Any opposed? No. Unanimously approved.
Thank you.
Okay, we solved that problem on the number three item there, so we need no action at that.
Yes, sir. We removed the consideration for the private road, Old Chicken Creek Lane. It's been withdrawn.
Thank you. Next item, library report. Jenna? Ms. Gray is our interim director of the library, and I think she's doing a wonderful job. So thank you for, whether it's filling in or gets more permanent or whatever the case, but thank you for doing the job you're doing now. We're ready for your report.
Thank you. Yes, I'm Jenna from the library. I remember several of you from a few years ago. I'm happy to see everyone again. And I have Shontay Fulton, our board chair, and Sandy Bradford, one of our library trustees as well, here with me to answer any questions that I can't answer. I've been back for a little over a month now, I guess, kind of temporarily filling in. I just want to give you a brief update of some programs that we have ongoing at the library, and then leave plenty of time for any questions that you may have. So I will just start off with our adult programming. We are hosting an adult science and reading program called Pushing the Limits. It is a reading, viewing, and discussion program led by Mary LeBlanc from the LCHS High School. She's the robotics teacher there, and she's collaborating with us. And we collaborated with her a few years ago for the same program and for several computer classes for adults. And she's just been wonderful, and we're so happy to have that connection with the high school. And she's personally been telling me about all the wonderful things that are going on at the high school. So I'm really excited to see where the library can kind of get some of those kids back into the library from that high school. This program, Pushing the Limits, is actually funded by a grant originally won in two thousand and sixteen. And so part of the series was held in two thousand and seventeen. There was a short break, and now the rest was held this year, and it will end in March of next year. The grant was provided in part by the National Science Foundation. It's meant to serve patrons of rural libraries, so perfect for us. There are books available for checkout at the library that supplement every discussion for each theme, but it's not necessary to read before attending the program. And each event starts with a video to kind of kick off the conversation. So you don't feel, it's not a book club. You don't have to read or know anything about science. It's not a lecture to come and enjoy it and just enjoy the conversation. It's really just about exploring science and everyday life. This next program coming up is about motion, and I know that it's about rodeo, which I think is a lot of fun for this area. There's so many horse people here. In October, our two themes were tradition and transformation. In January, you can look forward to the heritage theme and motion, and will be coming in March, I guess. And that will include the entire series. We've thoroughly enjoyed hosting these programs. We've gotten several new faces in the library because of these programs. It's not a program that we'd really be able to offer without the grant. Our adult book club called the Elk River Book Club, they meet monthly to discuss popular fiction and nonfiction. The next meeting is actually scheduled for this coming Thursday. And we're so pleased that this book club has remained strong over the last couple of years. So many book clubs just die. People are so busy that with their schedule, they just tend to kind of, that's the first thing that goes. And so this is largely due in part to Deborah Chaplin, one of our employees, who leads the group at the library. If you have any questions about upcoming titles or meeting dates, please let us know. They've adjusted their schedule for these couple of months because of the holidays. We do still have a young adult book club that meets monthly. Their next book club meeting is the fifth of December. And so the group focuses on young adult reading materials, but of course, you can be any age to join. In fact, most of the people that come are, you know, not teenagers, college-age kids. So it is open to any, any age. The library hosted a trick-or-treat event for Halloween this year where we gave out candy and books. And the weather really helped us that night because I know it was really cold, but we had two hundred and thirty-one kids come in that evening just for that. And so we gave out two hundred and thirty-one books just for them to take home. And, you know, they don't have to bring them back. They just got a good experience at the library. So we're hoping to continue that. And we also attended the Don Davidson Trick-or-Treat, too, and gave out books and candy there. And I don't know what their numbers were completely, but there must have been four or five hundred kids there that we gave out books to. The Polar Express event for the host had over a hundred and fifty attendees, and we're thrilled to have continued that tradition for another year. To give you a couple totals from September through October, so at least since I've been back, I can tell you that we've had five thousand nine hundred and forty-three visitors to the library, thirteen adult programs with eighty-four attendees total, eighteen children's programs with almost four hundred attendees, and total circulation for materials in the library, we've had eight thousand six hundred and ninety-three. So those numbers are pretty comparable to last year. Maybe a little tiny bit lower, but we're always looking for input from everybody for programs and materials and things like that, so. I've been answering questions if I can, they can.
I would just like to say that y'all are giving the word out there. It leaves over the radio through the week. I hear about every morning what's going on on WKR. I'm going to listen to, probably listen to the other station, but you really get, it's really giving out to the community.
Good. Good. I hope so. I hope so. We have really pushed their social media, the papers, everything, so we are glad.
I'm getting a lot of positive comments. And Dorbarne from the office carried a couple of her grandchildren to the Polar Express, and she was very excited on Monday morning after carrying two grandkids. She said it was wonderful. So thank y'all for all you do for all our citizens and the children, especially our county. Thank you.
We do have a new children's person, too. So stop, if you haven't met her already, her name is Carla. So stop by and meet her as well, so.
Thank you. Thank you. Next item, the Budget Committee Report. Commissioner Ogilvy.
Budget Committee Meeting Report for the November nineteenth, two thousand and nineteen regular session of the Board of Commissioners. Budget Committee of the County Legislative Body of Lincoln County, Tennessee, met pursuant to due notice in the Courthouse Basement Conference Room, November the fifth, two thousand and nineteen, at six P M. Members present were Steve Graham, Shirley Dangerfield, Grady Reviss, Donnie Ogilvy, Kate Ewing, Randy Bradford, Ricky Bryant, and Doug Cunningham. Others present, others present were County Mayor Bill Newman, Finance Director Cole Bradford, County Attorney Ed Sims, Fire EMA Director Doug Campbell, Commissioner Ronald Jean, Commissioner Mark Mitchell, Sheriff Murray Blackwelder, Jail Administrator Chris Thornton, Jail Lieutenant Vicki Aviso, Sheriff Lieutenant Jeff Bradford, Commissioner David Sanders, Commissioner John Thorpe, Commissioner Stephanie Britt, Commissioner Steve Sprague, Commissioner Tori Young, Lincoln Health System CEO Russ Sprague, Lincoln Health System EMS Director Richard Wright, and John Bradford. Item one. County Mayor Newman presented the following items. A, the current three-year E S R I G I S software will be expiring on twelve twenty-seven nineteen. A meeting was held on Friday, November the first, to determine if the city and county wanted to continue this, this service and enter into another three-year agreement. For the past three years, the city and county have been sharing the costs equally. The current total annual cost is thirty-five thousand dollars, with the city and county each paying seventeen thousand five hundred dollars. The city indicated they will agree paying one-half the cost for an additional year, but might request a lesser amount thereafter due to their limited use of the software compared to the county's use. Several county departments use this software, so the consensus was that the software is important to county operations going forward. Finance Director Bradford will, will request a copy of the proposed new three-year contract, and this item will be presented to the Budget Committee at the December meeting for formal approval of the contract. Mayor Newman did request a vote of support to continue using the software for the new three-year term, beginning in December the twenty-eighth, two thousand and nineteen. We had a motion by Commissioner Bryant, seconded by Commissioner Bradford, and passed unanimously to recommend approval of continuing to use the E S R I G I S software for the new three-year term, with the understanding that the city of Fayetteville will pay one-half of the cost for at least the next, the first year.
Okay. I would request a motion of intent. This will come back before the budget next month and back before the full commission once that Cole has that contract. Commissioner Bryant makes a motion, and I have a second by Commissioner Hunter. Any questions on that? I think Paul Braden may be in the audience if you have any questions about how we use that particular software. If not, all those in favor of approval of motion of intent, please say aye. Any opposed? No. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Ogilvy?
B. Pardon. The West Market School did not qualify for any of the historic grant opportunities. That was an information item. C, Wells Hill Park Grant was approved today, so this project can now proceed. That's an information item. Item two, Fire EMA Director Camel presented the attached one oh one general fund budget amendment request, which has been approved by the Fire EMA Committee, and that amount was six thousand three hundred dollars. A motion by Commissioner Cunningham, seconded by Commissioner A motion by Commissioner Cunningham, seconded by Commissioner Dangerfield, passed unanimously to recommend approval of the attached 101 General Fund Budget Amendment for Fire EMA.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Hunter makes a motion for approval. Commissioner Douglas seconds. Any questions or comments on this item? If not, all those approving, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Ogle.
Lincoln Health System EMS Director Wright presented the attached Lincoln Health System Board Request to Donate an Out-of-Service Ambulance Unit 214 to the Federal Police Department. Mr. Wright stated he did, he did check with Sheriff Blackwelder and Fire EMA Director Campbell to make sure they didn't have a need for the, for the unit first. Had a motion by Commissioner Bryant, seconded by Commissioner Ogle, and passed unanimously to concur with the Lincoln Health System Board's recommendation of donating the out-of-service ambulance unit 214 to the Federal Police Department.
What's the will of the commission? Commissioner Thorpe makes a motion that we concur. Is there a second? Commissioner Martinez, seconded. Any questions, comments? Not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Ogle.
Lincoln Health System has started the process of selling some of the old surplus equipment located in the three properties, Lincoln Care Center, Amana Avenue property, old EMS property at Lincoln Care Center, and the former hospice and home health property on Wilson Parkway. The commission previously approved selling subject to Attorney General's approval, which has been obtained, is an information item. Item 4. Finance Director Bradford presented the following items from the October 15, 2019 Financial Management Committee, FMC, meeting. A, at their October meeting, the Budget Committee and commission referred the county building maintenance director position to the Financial Management Committee for a recommendation concerning the necessary details for the position. So see item 2 of attached Financial Management Committee Minutes. We had a motion by Commissioner Ogle, seconded by Commissioner Bryant, passed unanimously to concur with the three recommendations below from the FMC, an increase 101-51-800-101 by $28,000. Increase account number 101-51-800-201 by $1,681. Increase account number 101-51-800-204 by $203. An increase 101-51-800-207 by $3,907. An increase 101-51-800-212 by $393. And decrease account number 101-39,000 by $34,184. County Building Maintenance Director Position will, under the Financial Management Committee and report to the Finance Director Bradford. County Building Maintenance Director Position will be established at no higher than a grade 42, consistent with the Fire EMA Director, Planning Zoning Director, and Information Technology Director. Upon a hiring committee consisting of Commissioner Bryant, Commissioner Britt, Mayor Newman, Finance Director Bradford, Register of Deeds Thelout, and Agriculture Extension Office Agent
What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Taylor makes a motion, seconded by Commissioner Mitchell. Any questions or items or discussions on this item? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no.
No.
Okay, let's, electronic vote, please. A yes vote would be to concur with the Budget Committee, a no vote will be an objection to.
I have 17 ayes, 2 absent, 5 no.
Motion passes. Commissioner Ogle.
Item 4B. Vacant lot north of the current USDA building. See item 3 of the attached Financial Management Committee Minutes. Once the geotechnical engineering service to evaluate the subsurface soil and rock conditions with respect to building sustainability are complete, the Financial Management Committee will reconvene to review the geotechnical report and make a recommendation to the Budget Committee at this time. Information item. Item 5. Finance Director Bradford presented the following items. A, 141 General Purpose School Fund Budget Amendments. There was three of those. Number 1 was for $289,023 to set up the state E Plan approved LEAP's Grant Budget 2019-20, no cash match required. Number 2 was for $65,793.42, as requested by Brad Luna Supervisor of Technology. This amendment is for the following. Reflects the laptop fees collected in 2019-20, reflects laptop repair reimbursement funds received from the Lenovo for 2019-20, reallocate from fund balance the remaining funds from 2018-19 for both laptop fees and laptop reimbursement funds. Number 3 is for $700, amendment for interpreter to provide, to provide translate services on curriculum and forms for non-English speaking students and parents in our system following required federal guidelines. We had a motion by Commissioner Cunningham, seconded by Commissioner Bradford, and passed unanimously to recommend approval of the attached 141 General Purpose School Fund Budget Amendments.
What's the will of the commission on this item?
Motion approved.
Commissioner Guntherberg makes a motion. Commissioner Taylor seconds it. Any questions or discussions on this, these three items on your school budget? All those in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Ogle.
Item 5B. The financial reports were attached, we had a motion by Commissioner Bryant, seconded by Commissioner Bradford, passed unanimously to acknowledge receipt of the attached financial reports.
Would entertain a motion of receiving those reports. Commissioner Taylor makes a motion. Commissioner Bryant seconds it. Anybody that did not receive those, respond at this time. All those that got them, please say aye.
Aye.
Any who did not, no. Mr. Ogle.
Item 6. There being no further business to be presented, we had a motion by Commissioner Ogle, seconded by Commissioner Bryant, and passed to adjourn. Respectfully submitted to the November 2019 Regular Session, the County Legislative Body's Steve Graham Chairman, Donnie Ogle Secretary. That's all we have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, I guess we're ready for the notary publics, please.
I have Susan A. McCowen by Commissioner Cunningham, Lynette Till by Commissioner Cunningham, Ashley Farmer by Commissioner Holland, Marlene Camp by Commissioner Spray, Tina A. Peel by Commissioner Cunningham, Kristy Thompson by Commissioner Spray, Brittany Pitts by Commissioner Hunter, Consuelo Armaz by Commissioner Thorpe, Debbie Ragsdale by Commissioner Reviss.
Any additions from a commissioner on any notary publics? All those in favor of the list that was read, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Next item, the floor is now open for new business from any commissioner.
I didn't have a motion.
On the motion for the notaries, I'm sorry, was there a mo?
Motion approved.
Thank you, Mr. Cunningham, thank you, Mr. Douglas, for, for a second. Was that a correction or you need to ask him for the floor?
Ask for the floor.
Okay, the first one that I, that I recognized on that, excuse me, everybody will get a chance tonight, so the first one that I'd recognize would be Commissioner Ewing. Who else would like to speak at this time, knowing those, okay? Commissioner Sanders, Commissioner Graham, did you raise your hand? Okay. Anybody? Commissioner Thorpe? You can still be added to the list, but these will be acknowledged prior to any others that raised their hand. Mr. Ewing.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here to speak on behalf of the Sheriff's Department. The county currently has a contract with a vendor for video and telephone visitation services for inmates and their families. The service began in 2015 and has since had numerous operational and technical issues. Our county attorney, Ed Sims, sent a cure letter to the vendor as required by the termination clause in the contract. That clause states the following. Either party may terminate this agreement in the event that the other party materially fails to perform its obligations under this agreement and said material failure shall continue for a period of 30 days after written notice to the defaulting party of the said failure is given. More than 30 days has passed since the cure letter was sent to the vendor, yet the existing operational problems have not been resolved. As such, at its last meeting, the law enforcement committee voted unanimously to terminate the contract. Since this is a contract with the county, this body will need to vote on this matter as well, so that requests for proposals for replacement system can be issued in a timely fashion. I propose that a motion to terminate this existing contract with this vendor be made tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Sims, would you address this issue at this time for the commission, please?
Commissioner Ewing did state correctly what our situation is, and I understand that the sheriff and the sheriff's department is having terrible problems with the system. I did send the cure letter out in July, they came back, as I understand it, and attempted to cure, but we still have problems and I think the problems are mounting. As I understand, it is affecting the safety and security of the department and some haywire things are going, I think as far as the system is concerned. These types of matters, and I mentioned this to the Budget Committee back two weeks ago, you know, when you put someone in default, there's always an issue as to whether or not this is a material default. That's what a judge decides or a jury decides, but from, as I can tell from the sheriff's department, they think it's material. So our next move would be to write them a letter and tell them that, you know, they failed to cure and that the, we'll be going out for more, new bids and we would like for their equipment to be removed by a certain date. They might come in and take the equipment out before that date, I can't predict that. I think they've got, under the contract, they've got 30, they have 30 days to remove their equipment. Hopefully, we can coordinate. So anyway, that's.
Okay, so a motion would be in order for you to prepare a letter to send them acknowledging that we, they are in breach of the contract and we plan to send out a request for proposal from other companies at this time.
That would be correct.
Okay. I would entertain a motion of that effect. Commissioner Douglas makes that motion. Commissioner Young seconds it. Any questions? The people that were there for is that the finance and budget committee may understand it a little better if you weren't there, we'll sure address you. Commissioner Thorpe, did you have a question?
Are we paying them a monthly fee?
It comes, and I asked that very question in budget, they actually pay us, and I don't know that we know, but we get a commission off of what they collect on that. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Thank you, Commissioner Ewing. Okay, Commissioner Guntherberg, I recognize you next.
I would like to call Leslie Frame to address the commission.
Okay, is there objection from any commissioner that Ms. Leslie Frame be, to be allowed to address the commission at this time?
I second.
Seeing none, Ms. Frame? I'm sorry, Mr. Frame. Excuse me. We, we allow everyone five minutes. We're not real strict on it unless we don't agree with you. No, you got five minutes.
I'm, Leslie Frame, I live at Grassy Branch. Everybody knows where the big city of Landtown is, but anyway. Commissioner, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
My information be trying to get maybe some verification on or give somebody a upside on it is you planning commission to cleaning up property around throughout the county. And they doing a good job, I've seen some good signs of all places being cleaned up. And I sure do appreciate that. But my problem was it's all A1 zone, has farming, and we can make him move his vehicles, pick up trash out of his yard, and haul it off, but he can go get an old rusty hay bale and pull it up there in the yard, have three tractors up there. And that's one of the problems, you know, that's the deal with, everybody will go and get them a combine or cot picker, pull it up in their yard. But anyway, I live at Grassy Branch subdivision, my house is not in the subdivision, but subdivision, sooner or later, they start selling houses and sell house, sell a house, somebody come in, move in, help bring a truck, unload it, throw it in the yard, it stays there three or four months. Got three or four line mowers, none of them run, grass growing up around the house, vehicles that don't run, and that's a problem, and they move some of them, they move some of them up the side of the house instead of out the front yard, which, that's somewhat better. That's my biggest problem is, you know, all the people that live in subdivisions, like our subdivision, which I'm not in, but I'm next to it, restrictions ran out. That's these where you get, and that's what's gonna happen to all the other subdivisions. Over time, they'll sell three or four times, the houses get dilapidated, won't be fixed or built up, and bring their junk in. And my house, I've got my house up for sale, I don't know where I'll ever sell it. You know, my next door neighbor, nobody wants to live there. This is the problem I want to address. And most of all of you will be faced with that problem at some point in time. And some people say, well, a man's junk's his own, but he don't have to write them fridge on, making my property go down. That's the way I feel about it.
Well, that's exactly the reason that we do, you know, have property maintenance rules in there. We, we don't address everything and I understand that. What, on the, I am not familiar with the Grassy Branch subdivision restrictions. Most of those do not run out on restriction on the subdivision, and a lot of times they're more restrictive than maybe our county maintenance would be. But no matter if it's in a subdivision or not, it would fall under our county regulations, but we don't enforce those restrictions that would be in a subdivision, so. I can check on that, but I, I'm not familiar with that subdivision, part of the restrictions.
This would run out in 20 years.
Okay. And, and I trust that you're correct, I'm just.
I'm not familiar with it.
I know the subdivision, I don't know any of the restrictions.
Okay, we'll, we'll check that and get back in touch with you, though.
That's the prob, you know, and some subdivisions restrictions ain't worth the paper they wrote on.
Yes, sir. Well, on restriction of subdivision, they're supposed to be enforced by the members that are in that subdivision. A lot of times you have people live there, they don't want to step up and enforce them against their neighbors, so that's not something we would be doing either as a county, but if it falls under the guidelines of our rules, we would be enforcing those.
But, but, and too the zoning there, I mean, you know, I don't understand that. I don't understand that.
Yes, sir, and that.
Eleven acres and I can't get it in the green belt for agriculture, but they can get one acre and declare it a agricultural.
Well, that's two different things. The zoning is the A1. The green belt is that where you have to have 15 acres for it to qualify to be taxed as an agricultural entity. So, it's two different things. And, uh, Paul Brayden, I don't know if he's here, but I know that he would be glad to. If you come by his office, he can explain that very well.
I pretty well understand it, but it just don't seem right to me.
I understand.
Well, I thank you for your time.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Okay. Who was next? Okay, I, I recognize Commissioner Graham.
Thank you. I've, I've just got a question for our county attorney. Uh, I was wondering if you had looked into the controversial vote taken in August on the property maintenance? And if that, uh, if that vote is valid or not?
I've mentioned this to several of the commissioners and I think to maybe to the mayor. As far as I'm concerned, it was a valid vote. Uh, it, there was a two-thirds majority, uh, and that's, you know, that's what I thought was required. Sometimes you have to have, uh, substance over form. It wasn't called exactly right, it wasn't named exactly right. But the, but the right procedure was, was gone through. So I, I think it was a valid vote.
Okay.
That'd be my opinion.
Okay. Okay, well, who was next on recognizing? Commissioner Bright was next. Okay, Commissioner Bright?
So, am I to understand then from the county attorney that we don't have to follow our rules and procedures up here? Simple question.
We, we, we follow our rules and procedures. It's just, it was not named properly.
Didn't that and that?
It wasn't named properly, but the vote was proper.
We can pull the records.
They called it wrong. In, in many court situations, the court will overlook, uh, what someone files and how they, how they, uh, how they plead it. If they have the proper, if they go through the proper procedure. They'll, they'll rename it because it, it doesn't make sense. If you've gone through the proper procedure, everything was done according to the, uh, to the rules in this case. They'll, they'll go ahead and let it go through.
But, but it was not, there's, there's an intervening month. Cannot be an intervening day and that motion be made. Just that simple.
Again, the two-thirds vote, it was a two-thirds vote. I think that, that was all that was required to make that a valid, uh, a valid vote. That's my thought.
Is, is it reasonable to say, and it doesn't matter to me which side anybody's on. People believe what they believe and I don't beat people up for that. But, um, is it reasonable to say then that in a court of law, that would create reasonable doubt?
Now, that's a criminal matter.
Not a, not a criminal, okay. Just asking, thank you.
Next. Commissioner Sanders, were you next? Okay.
I would like to recognize, uh, Sheila Ashby, please, by the commission.
Okay, is there any objection to, is, is it, okay.
I'll second it.
Pardon?
I'll second it.
Okay. Any objection to Mr. Ashby? Mr. Ashby, you're, you got your five minutes.
I got a county road. County's been working there since about 2014. In the past three months, they said they wasn't gonna work it no more because they couldn't find nothing where it was located in the records from the works. And they've been working it till about three months ago to a man had a car towed in down there cause said it's sitting on his property, which was county property. They said they wasn't gonna work it no more. Cause I'm not asking them to work it all the way up to where my house is at, but what they've already got, about a half a mile of it. It's been made county road, I'd like them to keep it up.
Any questions to Mr. Ashby? Thank you. Okay. Next person that raised their hand far as acknowledgement? I recognize Commissioner Bryant.
Just have a simple motion and I, I made the, uh, commission aware of this last month that I moved to rescind, uh, with appropriate notice, the adoption of the international swimming pool and spa code. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, okay. What was your, is this a motion?
To rescind with appropriate notice.
Motion to rescind, okay. Uh, and did you vote on the prevailing side?
As a rescind? I voted no.
Okay.
I wouldn't hear that night, actually. I wouldn't hear at all. I would've voted no, but I wouldn't hear. Wasn't on either side.
Okay.
Sorry, I wouldn't hear, but that is my motion, thank you.
Okay, so you're just making a motion that we take off the swimming pool regulations that were voted in whatever month that was? Two months ago? Is that?
I think he's in order.
I think he is too, far as the way the motion was made. Is there a, okay, is there a second? Commissioner Thorpe makes that second. Now, here's what, it'll be open for discussion. We would be removing that one item far as swimming pool safety. And best of my memory, it required a fence around pools, maybe an alarm around pools. Ms. Nancy, do you want to address exactly what those safety standards were?
There are actually several, um, it's, it's the 2018 international swimming pool and spa code.
Okay.
Uh, there are several criteria in there, but more specifically, yes, it's, it's about safety. Uh, it's a barrier around the pool, in-ground pool. If it's an above-ground pool, the ladder is removable to keep children from, from falling in and, and prevent deaths. That's the whole purpose of the code.
Do all of them have to have the alarms on them?
Yes.
All pools?
And, and that is, um, done through the electric system, if I'm not mistaken. The state electrical inspector requires that.
For a new home?
For a new pool.
For a new pool?
Right. We're talking just pools and spas.
Okay, all right. What about, at what depth does, if somebody goes to Walmart and buys a kiddie pool two foot deep?
It doesn't fall under that.
Okay. Is there a height or depth that?
Twenty-four inches.
Four feet is what, okay. Okay, below four feet? No fence? Is that?
Twenty-four inches is what the code says.
Okay. Okay. All right. Okay, do y'all understand what the motion is? Is to remove, uh, all of those rules that covered swimming pools that we voted in prior to this?
Discussion really, uh, you know, I, I just done some simple Googling over the last few days and there's actually more. You know, you can, you can't legislate safety. There's more children hit by pedestrians, children hit by cars every year. You know, than, I mean, I just don't think we can legislate those kinds of things. I'm all four children, I've worked, I've taught children and took care of them my whole life. But I don't think we can legislate those kind of things. You know, I've, I've done a little research into this and back in the late eighties, there was a study done that there was 160 children over four-year period in the United States that drowned in a five-gallon bucket. You know, so there's always, bad, bad stuff just happens, you know? I just don't think we can legislate, you know, because there's just so many things. Like I said, there's, the numbers are higher on pedestrians, children getting hit by cars outside playing.
Are, are pools that are already in existence grandfathered in or? Okay, so if you got a pool now and you don't have a fence, you know, you don't have to go, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. All right, any other discussion or questions? Commissioner Spry, was it Commissioner Spry?
I had three different insurance companies this week and asked that question. And they require a fence for their insurance policy for homeowners. So it's just like you say, it's a, a safety issue. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Less electronic vote on this item. A yes vote will be repealing, would be voting to remove those items that are required around swimming pools. A yes vote, no vote, leaving it in place. Madam Clerk?
Have eight yes, fourteen no, and two absent.
Okay. That is, that? Okay, tell me those numbers again.
Eight yes.
Okay.
Fourteen no.
Okay, it stays in force then. All righty. Who else have I not? Commissioner Cunningham?
Wait a minute.
Whoa, whoa. Okay.
I didn't hold my hand up, but I didn't, I want to speak.
Okay. I recognize Commissioner Ogle.
I want to speak to the zoning resolution. I wasn't here last month and, and we had a situation where we, we changed the voting. According to Mr. Sims's opinion, uh, uh, they can, uh, that we can say.
They're asking for you to use the mic.
That we can't, there's some things that we can't say no to. You can say no, but it don't make any difference. Because we voted, uh, to change.
Okay, let me clarify where we are. This relates to a change in zoning. We had voted on a, uh, Lee Wells, uh, address property. We had turned down a change from A1 to A2 in a previous meeting. It was brought back up after direction from council that, uh, we can't do that, uh, turn it down without cause. So that's where we are on discussion. Now, I'm sorry to intervene, but I wanted to make sure everybody was on the same page. Commissioner Ogle?
Well, um, I think the, the key there was we couldn't turn it down without cause. And the only way we can, we can, uh, change things is by changing our, changing our zoning resolution. Because we're gonna always have these A1, A2, uh, changes that are being asked for. And if you can't stop it, why bring it before us? So I want to, we started out in 1993, 94 with a zoning resolution. Uh, we're preparing a zoning resolution. And, uh, and the people in, in our county didn't want it at that time. So we just basically forgot about it. But then it became apparent that we had, we were gonna have to do something. So we started, uh, preparing another zoning resolution, which passed, uh, back, I don't know, in 2002 or '03. But, uh, then we set up our planning office and, and, uh, and I think things have been moving along fairly good. But we've got a problem in our county with, uh, with our subdivision regulations. And the fact that, uh, uh, they're too, they're too lenient. And I feel like that, um, it's time we, we started moving to change those subdivision regulations to where it better suits our county. If you go any county around us, uh, the requirements are a lot stiffer than what we've got. And, and in order to, to bring our county where it needs to be, I think we need to, we need to change those regulations. And I'm gonna move that we revise our county subdivision regulations to meet the same requirements as our urban growth regulations. That's my motion.
Do I have a second? I think it's gonna fail for a lack of, of a second.
At least I try.
Okay. Commissioner Dangerfield? Well, uh, we didn't get a motion on the floor, so discussion I think would be out of order. If we'd had a second, I'd open it for discussion. I don't want to cut anybody off. But if the commission disagrees, let me know at this time. Okay, now it's gonna take two days to explain. If somebody in this room knows about the urban growth restrictions and that, it's quite complicated. But Commissioner Cunningham, if you want to explain it?
Well, I, you know, it is complicated.
It's very complicated.
And a couple of different land use committees going through all this. But, you know, I suggest we go back to the planning commission, if that's the way you want to do that and bring it through them. We have a committee system. Bring your, your concerns to the planning commission and let them bring it forward. That's the way to do something like this. So, you know, I think that's the way I would be handling it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Do you want to make, make a motion to that effect, Commissioner Ogle? I mean, Commissioner Cunningham?
We've been, we've beat this horse to death, Mr. Chairman. So, and I, I don't believe for a second that other counties have more restrictions than we are. And our subdivisions have dropped drastically since we, we put in county-wide zoning and have a building inspector. It's really changed for us. So, you know, our problems came years ago when we didn't have any zone. And, and that was where our problems lay. So, if it needs to be, you know, Mr. Ogle certainly, uh, if he has concerns, he needs to go back to the planning commission and express those concerns to them. If they have concerns, let them bring it forward. That's, that's the way the system works.
And, and when we talk about cause, it, that is an administrative duty because it can be limited by whether the utilities are there for the approval of that. Schools, safety of roads, width of roads, approach from the driveway to the subdivision in their line of sight. There's a lot of things that administration looks at before they approve it. If you got, if y'all have one in your neighborhood and you don't think, you know, there's enough water or utilities or the roads are a restriction or schools are, you need to be at those meetings, uh, that the administrative part of it. I'm not, you know, trying to reprimand anybody, but those are the causes that, that we can turn it down for. And, and, and I don't doubt that there are cases that we, that we shouldn't be approving those. It's just, uh, but those are limiting factors and there may be other limiting factors. And there may be safety. Sheriff may say he doesn't want a subdivision. You want them, don't you, Sheriff? Oh, we don't want them.
Well, I brought that, I brought that up because we said no to something. The county commission said no to it.
I, I'm on your side.
County attorney comes back and says you can't say no. Well, then there's no need to bring it to us if we can't say no. I, I have a real problem with that. I don't, I, I don't mind taking the butt chewings for something, but I don't like to take them if I can't do anything about it.
Well, I, I think the thing is when you see one there, make sure that Chris Mers or Fedville Public Utilities says there's proper water, electricity there. And the school, uh, system says there's plenty of space for those children. And there's a safety factor on pulling out the road. And Tim Gill says road's wide enough to take that extra traffic.
I would, I would agree with that. And I'd ask the planning commission to bring that information to us before we're out.
And I would agree to that. That's, that's a very good point. Commissioner Cunningham?
Mr. Chairman, I, I talked to, to Ms. Nancy about all this. Before a subdivision goes one foot, it goes to the utility committee first. And FPU and the water department and the highway department and all these, these people look at it before it ever goes anywhere else. And, and Tim Gill says, hey, this is, the road's good enough to, to handle this subdivision. The water department says, yes, we have enough water for this. All that's done before any other step is taken. And people need to go back and look at, at what our process is before you start planning.
All I, all I'm saying is bring that information to us. I want to see that report that says that, that the roads are good and the water's good and the fire, uh, the fire protection is good. I want to see that report.
I think we can, I.
It wouldn't even get to you if it wasn't.
Well, that's all right. Just bring it to me, let me see it.
I think we can ask for that. That's not a problem.
And I've been through that process and they do a very good job of that. We went through the utility board process with some building we were doing. And so I know what that process is and you're right. You do have to go through that process and those people do bless that project, so, so to speak.
Okay. Anybody else? Commissioner Thorpe?
I'd like to recognize Mr. Derek Lehman from District Two.
Say the name again.
Derek Lehman.
Derek Lehman, Derek.
First, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak. I know several of y'all, a lot of y'all don't. I'd like to speak to the zoning committee and the things that we're doing with the amendments. First off, I'd like to say that I feel like the zoning and planning committee really has a place. I think they're doing, they do some good things when you have people that need water, need access to their property through a sale, if there's a disagreement or something, you know, fixing those problems, making sure that people have the ability to get water, electricity, access to their property, things of that nature. What I, what my concern is, you know, as far as the trash goes, and a lot of other things, you know, different people classify different things as trash. And I can fully understand this gentleman here wanting to make sure that his property value is up as high as it possibly can be for sale, or for whatever reason. But I would like, I'd like to see going forward, when we're voting on these things, that we look and see what's fact-based and what's opinion-based. Just because one person likes or dislikes one thing, such as a vehicle out in the yard, or grass being over 12 inches, or something like that, it's really based on opinion, it's what somebody likes. And I feel like the whole basis of us being America, you know, we got away from Britain because they were overtaxing us and overregulating us. 250-some-odd years later, we're giving power back to the government. Taxes, we're letting them tell us, hey, if we can grow our grass up 12 inches, or, you know, what we can do, a lot of us live in the county because we like those freedoms. Everybody here's got neighbors, and I can promise you that everybody's neighbor does something that they don't like. That's their opinion. If we start making regulations and rules based off of, well, I don't like my neighbor's grass being 12 inches, I'm sure if you go ask your neighbor, hey, man, is there anything that I'm doing that you're not pleased with, he can probably name 10 things. Either he's feeding hay too close to your house and the smell is blowing over. There's a lot of people that farm here, and farming has its own things that people from out of town and from cities don't like. That's why we live in the county. We like our freedoms, we like to be able to do what we want to do, as long as it's not harming anybody. So I think my plea for the zoning and planning commission, there's some good people working there, we've got wonderful commissioners, my plea would be, going forward, as we're voting on these things and trying to make the county a better place, that we leave opinions out of it and look at fact-based things, you know, like making sure that people get water and access to their property, and that their health and welfare is the utmost. But that's just my thing, you know, if we can separate opinion, if you can explain the amendment by, well, I like this, everybody, and one good, you know, everybody's saying that, you know, who wouldn't want a clean neighborhood? Who wouldn't want a clean yard? Cleaning is all in the opinion. Either those people like their yard being junky, which I particularly don't, I like to keep my place kind of clean, but it could also be a health issue, maybe it's an elderly person, or somebody that can't take care of the yard, somebody that's not able to, a disabled person. You know, I think that we need to take those factors into consideration moving forward. If we voted on something already and we can't change it, we just can't. But I would plead with the commissions at hand that, going forward, that you take those factors into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Derek. Anyone else? Commissioner Young?
May I make a motion in this commission meeting to look at those regulations for subdivisions? The planning committee, look at the regulations that Commissioner Ogil was talking about, and let's put more restrictions, or look into putting more restrictions on subdivisions at this time.
Okay, restate your motion.
I would like to look at those regulations, the stricter rate regulations for subdivisions.
Okay, for the planning and zoning to look at those far as making them more restrictive?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion? Commissioner Guntherberg makes a second. Floor is now open for discussions on this item. I would ask you to electronic vote at this time. A yes vote would be asking the planning and zoning to look at making the subdivision restrictions more restrictive.
Fourteen yes, eight no, two absent.
Okay, the motion to ask the planning and zoning to look at more restrictive subdivision restrictions passes.
Mr. Chairman?
What are you asking me to do?
Yes, sir.
I'm Grady Revis, Commissioner, District Two. I've been on the planning commission 13 years. Some of my people sitting back here appreciate all of you. Appreciate everybody listening just one minute to this. I'm trying to help here. I agree 100% with having rules and regulations stricter in our subdivisions than we do in our rural. I have been fighting this very thing 13 years. It always comes up with the fact that it's my cousin's aunt's sister's brother's cousin. And it come before the committee, whether it be this whole body, or whether it be another committee, or whatever it might be, and it gets voted down. There's no need of us starting over with another committee or appointing anything to do with redoing our subdivision or our planning commission. We could have fixed this, I know some of it, over 13 years ago. Now then, if we think we're going really try to fix this thing and go by our laws that, I think Ms. Nancy would back me 100%. We've got a book this thick. I know we've got it, although I've got one of them, cards and any of the rest of it, the zoning and planning commission has one. And if it don't suit me, well, we don't go that way. If it don't suit you, it don't go that way. Whether the book says, or our rules, I'll say the book, our rules and regulations that our planning commission haven't been followed as they should have been. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Commissioner Revis. Commissioner Douglas?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to recognize Ms. Nancy Harris and her to speak to the commission.
Okay. Ms. Harris.
Thank you, Commissioner Douglas. For the benefit of the public audience, I just want to take a moment to dispel some erroneous rumors and explain the process of how the Planning and Zoning Office administers zoning. There's a misconception being voiced that the Planning and Zoning Office invents regulations for the benefit of having power. This is ludicrous. Other than clerical corrections or minimum building codes required by the state for a building inspector position, amendments stem from citizens. They come into our office, we research and we determine whether or not it's valid, or we discount the claim. It's not just an individual claim, it's several that come into our office. If that claim is indeed valid and not an isolated situation, that matters carried to the Planning Commission. Planning Commission consists of 11 members from across the county. Planning Commission weighs everything out additionally to what the Planning and Zoning Office does. A recommendation is made from the Planning Commission to this body right here, the legislative body. This body calls for a public hearing, and only then, when it is called for a public hearing, everything's advertised, and it comes back to this committee for a vote. If they vote yes, that's the only time, only time, the Planning and Zoning Office can administer that regulation. We do not have the power, nor do we want the power, to do something on our own. That's not how the TCA, that's not how the state codes work. We have to go through that process. The Planning and Zoning Office, it's just troubling to me, I guess, I'm sorry, I'm kind of stammering, but it's emotional. It's troubling that there are some commissioners taking the position that the Planning Commission and the Planning and Zoning Office are power-hungry, and that we are passing regulations. That's what's going out on social media. This is misguided rumors at best, and it's a disservice to you, because a lot of you take that for granted, that that's what's happening, and it's not. You've heard me say the steps, that's exactly how it has to work, there's no other way. If it's something we enforce or administer, it's passed by this legislative body first, has to. It's understood that we're a rural county, and there are several people that don't get the paper. And because of that, the Planning Commission established a Facebook page, and that's to post our minutes, our agendas, we have our meeting dates, our meetings are posted in Elk Valley Times, it's always the first Thursday of the month unless there's a holiday. Our meetings are open by the sunshine law. Anybody and everybody's welcome to attend. I've invited this legislative body, I've urged them to attend. Not all of them did. And it's ironic that the ones that are feeding the frenzy are the ones that have never stepped foot in our meetings. And that's a shame. With regard to property maintenance, I just want to say that that was an uphill battle, tremendous. But we've had so much outcry from people begging for help, clean, have my neighbor clean up, and it's not just an aesthetic thing, you know, I don't like the 12 inches of grass. I mean, we use common sense, we use what God gave us. If it's a health issue, if the grass is this high, and you've got rats and snakes, and your neighbor can't go outside, the children can't go outside, it becomes a health hazard. That's what we look at. We don't look at, hey, it's 12 inches high, go cut your grass. I mean, it has to be logical, we try to use that in our interpretations. Out of the 53 that we've received so far that are legitimate complaints, nine of them have been complied with so far, and all but one, amazingly, the people understand and have acknowledged, yeah, we do need to remove that, yes, yes, it is something that is causing a health issue. So it's working, it's a positive move, and it's working. On a different subject, one that should never have been introduced into this forum, I'd like to mention a situation that occurred at the last county commission meeting. A comment was made that was totally hearsay, and it was an attempt to defame my character. The situation described is untrue and has been validated because there was a witness. To speak like it was spoken in a public forum such as this shows the recklessness of that individual, and it also shows that that person is not of a noble character to be a commissioner. I welcome any discussion on this matter in the public, or I'm sorry, in the proper forum where it belongs, and that's one-on-one. If you have a situation with anybody in the Planning and Zoning Office, or even the Planning Commission, we talk, we communicate like adults. We don't call names, we don't slander, and we don't do hearsay in a public forum. Thank you, that's all.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion to adjourn then, Mr. Cunningham. He hadn't made it yet.
Make sure about that.
Do we have a second? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. We're adjourned.